Is everyone ready? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, and the time is 5:30 PM. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Motley?
Here.
Friedle?
Present.
Paulson?
Present.
Beyondich?
Present.
Johnson?
Here.
Aaron Sally?
Here.
Cuffy?
Present. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you. And we'll move to item four on the agenda, which is a public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody from the general public who'd like to address the council this evening. Would anyone like to address the council? Seeing none, we move to item five on the agenda, which is a consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a councillor or a citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and corrections of the minutes of the regular meeting held on October 22nd, 2024. Item 5.2, adopt finance resolution number 24-020, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3, approve pay estimate number five to Minnesota Boardwalks for the Silver Lake Trail Phase 2B in amount of $667,375.71. Item 5.4, approve pay estimate number six to Casper Construction for the 10th Avenue West and 13th Street project in the amount of $727,018.93. Item 5.5, approve the following travel requests. Cassie Slawinski and Max Olson from the Virginia Police Department to attend the storm training group February 2nd through the 5th, 2025, in St. Paul, Minnesota, at a cost of $1,598 total. Item 5.5B, Dustin Erickson from the Fire Department to attend the National Fire Academy, January 4th through 11th, 2025, and March 1st through March 8th, 2012, Emmitsburg, Maryland, at a cost of $305.13. Item 5.6, approve the one-day transient merchant license for Kotai Tran doing business as Saigon Cafe LLC on November 23rd, 2024. Of item 5.7, approve a temporary on-sale liquor license for the Cultures, Humanities, and Arts on the Iron Range on November 22nd, 2024. Is it the 23rd? I'm sorry, November 23rd, 2024. These are the consent agenda items for the council, looking for council action. Pam?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one adjustment on the pay estimate for the Minnesota Boardwalks. It should be $226,972.34.
Run that by me one more time. Okay, so item 5.3 has been adjusted a correction. It's not $667,375.71. It is $226,972.34.
I will move the consent agenda.
Councilor Johnson moves to approve the consent agenda. Is there support by Councilor Beyondich? Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 6, appearances. There is no one scheduled to appear before the council this evening. Move on to number seven, unfinished business. 7.1, the clinic lease. I know there's some additional information that might be disseminated. Britt, do you have any more information with respect to the clinic lease?
We were supposed to meet tomorrow, but we had to schedule the meeting for next week. So we may know more after next week.
We know more after next week. I did have a previous discussion, just preliminary discussion, informally with Sam Stone today at the ITRRB, so.
We did hear from our bond counsel that there is, the bond does have to be paid off before we can transfer ownership, no matter which way, shape, or form, it has to be paid off.
Very good. Thank you for that. So we look forward to that. More information after that meeting next week. Hey, thank you. Anything else from legal with respect to that? Noel? Nothing? Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments from the council regarding the clinic lease? Okay, we'll move to item number eight, discussion items. Item 8.1, appoint Rocky Dinoffrio to the HRA, the Housing Development Authority, for a five-year term ending November 23rd, 2029.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Paulson. Is there support by Councilor Friedle? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Appoint Brandy Halsladen, apologize if I mispronounce that, Halsladen to the Human Rights Commission for the remainder of a three-year term ending January 31st, 2026. Moved by Councilor Friedle. Is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Motley. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Adopt the resolution to set a public hearing for Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, for the proposed 2025 alley project.
Moved.
Moved by Councilor Motley. Is there support? By Councilor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So just if we could get some, just for the public, this meeting will be held for the public's benefit of a public hearing to discuss the projects for the alleys that have been designated. And is there a place online that people can go to understand which of those alleys? And have we notified, other than by setting the hearing, have we notified those people affected by mail?
This is our third time doing this hearing, actually. And the good thing is that we will notify them by mail. The good thing, doing it the third time, is because of the way the statute reads, we have to do the improvements within one year of the hearing. And our last hearing was one year ago this month. So we need to redo it again, just to make sure we have it in time for the construction season. We will send a letter to all the taxpayers of record. It'll also be in the paper, and it is on our website under the 2024 Alley Project. It was supposed to have been done this year.
Okay.
We didn't get to it.
So, so the general public can access that information?
The great thing is we've changed the policy. That's the good news. We've updated their improvement policy. So now your estimated dollar months are going to be a lot lower because of the way we updated the policy.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. It's been moved and supported. And to set the res, the public hearing for Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, it would be prior to our regularly scheduled council meeting. So it'll be set at 4:00 PM. The public hearing at 4:00 PM on December 10th. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.4 is adopt resolutions authorizing to certify to St. Louis County special assessments against properties for the following. We take this all at once or it has to be individual motions? So individual motions, resolution for the delinquent public utilities.
Moved.
Moved by Councilor Motley. Is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Paulson?
Aye.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Aaron Sally?
Aye.
Cuffy?
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Friedle?
No.
What was that, Councilor Motley? Aye. Okay, our motion passes 6-1. Thank you. Item 8.4B, resolution for low-interest conversion loans.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Motley. Is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Johnson?
Mayor, why are they low-interest loans when the interest rate is zero? Is that just how they have to be defined? Okay.
How the statute defines them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. It moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Aaron Sally? Cuffy?
Aye.
Motley?
Aye.
Friedle?
No.
Paulson?
Our motion passes 6-1. Thank you. Item, item 8.4C, adopt the resolution for unpaid Virginia Public Maintenance Code bite violations.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Paulson. Is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Johnson?
Aye.
Aaron Sally? Cuffy?
Aye.
Motley?
Aye.
Friedle? Paulson?
Aye.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Our motion passes 6-1. Thank you. Item 8.4D, adopt a resolution for unpaid vacant building fees.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Paulson. Is, I'm sorry, I apologize. Councilor Motley, is there support? Is there support? Support by Councilor Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So just so, if we could have that refreshed, if you don't mind. It was, the first year was X amount, second year. So this would be the, since we enacted the vacant building code, was a year ago. So this is the second year on, is that correct? So it would be the second fine level.
These are the people that do not register. These are people that are either ignoring the letters we sent them, including certified mail, or just totally not responding whatsoever.
And what, what is the actual fee for this? So even if they are on their second year, if it's their first year of missing it, is it like $100? $100? Okay, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson. Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Where is the list for this one? I'm looking at 4D, and I'm not seeing a list of above or below it.
You're looking for a list of those who are, who find the vacant buildings?
Yeah, the other, all the other ones had the list of the property codes. This one does not have that.
Okay, thank you.
Right before the resolution.
In the packet, just before the resolution?
With $100 and $50.
Well, that's, that's two pages ahead. That's why I couldn't find it. So it's on page 68 and 69.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't see it right adjacent to it. So I wanted to make sure that, all right, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Johnson. Okay, it has, has it been moved and supported? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and, Councilor Friedle?
What, what criteria is used to deem a building vacant in the city? How do we determine that it's vacant?
Vacant? Vacant? There's nobody in there?
So because there's nobody in there, it makes it vacant? What if they're utilizing it for other purposes, such as storage for their own?
Than what it is.
Okay. So it's primarily that there's, we, how do we deem that it's vacant, though? How do we know that?
No utility usage.
No utility usage? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Friedle. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Aaron Sally? Cuffy?
Aye.
Motley?
Aye.
Friedle?
No.
Paulson?
Aye.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Our motion passes 6-1. Thank you. Okay, item 8.4E, a resolution regarding the Clearwater Discharge Ordinance Fees.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Cuffy?
Aye.
Motley?
Aye.
Friedle?
No.
Paulson?
Aye.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Aaron Sally?
Our motion passes 6-1. Thank you. On item 8.4F, adopt a resolution for the rental code ordinance fees.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Motley. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Johnson. Further discussion? I have one quick question before we go to Councilor Johnson, and then over to Councilor Paulson. Does these take effect at December 1?
They register by November 30th.
By November 30th. So they have until November 30th. At the end of the day on November 30th, that's when it takes effect. Because I had a couple of telephone calls, so they were going to register on the 30th. They're good, still good to go. All right, thank you. Councilor Johnson?
I have two things to add. One, how many people are on, how many properties are on the list? It was?
192.
Okay. And I think this is a really good time for folks to realize we are serious about this. This was not an empty threat. It was not something that we are taking lightly. That, I find it ironic that people don't want their properties to be safe, and they don't want the backing of the city when they need to take legal action. And that's exactly what this would help them do moving forward. So I think these folks need to realize that we have, we have created a system to keep our citizens safe and that we need to be enforcing it, and we will continue to do so.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson and Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. So could we repeat that was 200 and how many? Two?
292.
292. So that equates to $395,550, if you add all those up. My question is, on the 1350 assessed, what, what did we, I thought it wasn't quite that much.
There's a fee of, I believe, $700 for failure to register.
So the $700 fee, failure to register fee?
The $400 registration fee.
On top of the registration fee? And then?
And then we, we just put everybody at one unit because we don't know if it's more than one or not.
Okay.
So we just guessed and just did one unit for everybody.
So that's how you arrived at the 1350? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, if I may, we have sent out, we did a mass mailing of 500 some letters two months ago. And so this is the last, they're continually coming in. So some of these people will drop off before we get to November 30th, which is wonderful. We will do, right around the week of, the last week of Thanksgiving, we'll do one more final letter. That's just your assessment amount. Now going to proceed.
So then, if this passes tonight, they may, whoever still needs to register, can register by the end of the day on November the 30th. Very good. Thank you. Councilor Friedle?
And it's just kind of in the For What It's Worth department. I just feel personally that we've become ordinance-laden in this city. I think we are enacting government overreach on steroids at this point in time and becoming burdensome in terms of like allowing people to just live their lives and own their property in a manner in which they see fit. Now, that's not to say that we don't have some problems in this town that need to be addressed. But I don't know that enforcement necessarily is the way to go about that as much as assistance would be. And in the few meetings that I've been in, I haven't really seen an offering of assistance to our community. And in regard to these resolution items, I really don't have the, it's a real generic, general list of things, and I don't have any individual knowledge of why these people are struggling to pay their loans or their violations or their fees or whatever. And there may be legitimate and justifiable reasons for which they are behind. And I just don't know that hammering them with enforcement is going to be the way to get these things accomplished. But it's where we're at right now, and that's why I'm opposing this at this point in time, just from a principle standpoint. Thank you.
I thank you, Councilor Friedle. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Motley?
Just a quick question, maybe, Britt, of the 200, or what was the number on how many?
192.
Just curiosity as the conversations progressed. Do we know if these people that own these properties actually live in Virginia?
There's quite a few that don't.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
They're all over the country. I mean, it's, yeah.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Motley. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, if I could ask a process question. So they will get assessed on the taxes, and then the county collects the tax. When will the city receive the funds from the collecting of the tax?
Then they pay their taxes. So if they pay in full before May 15th, we get it in full. If they pay it in half, we'll get the two halves.
Okay.
If they don't pay, then it's on on sale or wherever.
And this is fiscal year 2025?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
A roll call, please, Pam.
Motley?
Aye.
Friedle?
No.
Paulson?
Aye.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Aaron Sally? Cuffy?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-1. Thank you. Item 8.5, a planning and zoning meeting that was held on November 4th, 2024. Item 8.5A, approve a total of 310 square feet of signage where 64 feet is allowed. And where would this be at?
Did you ask where would this be at? Is that what you said?
Where is this at?
Super 1 South.
Super 1, South.
Oh, Super 1? Okay, I didn't see, I didn't look at the resolution, so I apologize for that. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Friedle. Is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Johnson? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 8.5B, approve an additional sign where one is allowed per principal entrance.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Motley. Is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Friedle? Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.5C, approve a variance for Scott Mary located at 632 Third Street South for an AB addition storage building, to add an additional storage building, and a variance of an additional 245 square feet where 1,000 square feet is allowed for a total of 1,245 square feet, and to allow for more than 30% rear yard coverage with the condition of storm water management plans submitted to the engineering department with building plan and a request to allow a zero-foot setback on the western property line where five feet is required.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Friedle. Is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Friedle?
If I may, I'm a neighbor at the end of the block, and I just want to commend Mr. Mary for perpetually, continually improving upon his property and trying to make things as good as he can for his family. I know at times people can scratch their head as to what people are doing and why they're doing it. But he did explain to us that night at that meeting that it's in, it's to improve his, his family's ability to gather together and enjoy each other's company. So I commend him for the efforts he's making, and especially for his continuous improvement of the property at the end of Third Street.
Yeah, thank you. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.6, approve the closure of the 500 block of Chestnut Street from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on November 23rd, 2024, for the Frozen Fest. Moved to approve by Councilor Fried, Councilor Paulson, apologize. And supported by Councilor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Move to item 9, committee reports. Item 9.1, the committee, the whole meeting that was held on November 5th, 2024. And we'll turn this portion of our meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennett, for a rather lengthy committee report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. At the committee of the whole on November 5th, we had a presentation by John McNamara from World Architects and Sean Lewis from Carus Anderson regarding the Public Safety Center project. Mr. McNamara discussed the proposal that he had offered for professional services regarding fixtures, furnishings and equipment or FFNE for the new building. It was moved and supported to accept the proposal to provide professional design services for the FFNE for the Public Safety Center from World Architects in the amount up to $600,000.
So moved.
Move to approve by Councilor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Mayor, just to clarify, that $600,000 includes the budget for FFNE and also the architect fees.
Supported by Councilor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Sean Lewis from Carus Anderson reported that they finished the precast portion of the building and it is a little shocking to all of a sudden see a building sitting there on Second Avenue, but it's great. He also prevented further information on the status of the whole project. We discussed change order number 16, which is for the manhole cover, which will, which was on the property that we had to relocate. It will increase the project cost by approximately $12,992.52. One cover was crumbling and the other one needed replacement while one needed to be heightened. It was moved and supported to approve change order number 16 for the addition of a manhole cover for the increase of Carus Anderson's contract by $12,992.52.
Moved.
Move to approve by Councilor Johnson, is there support? By Councilor Freely, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Matt Reed is present, our engineer of record from SEH, to discuss the set of change orders for the 2023 Street project, 10th Avenue West and 13th Street South portion. He noted that change orders one and three go together. There was an error on how the project was bid. As to correct it, we had to do change orders one and three, which are in addition and subtraction of the same dollar amount, just to clarify some paperwork. Therefore, it was moved and supported to approve change order number one from Casper Construction for the 2023 Street project for a decrease in the contract of $42,075.
Moved.
Move to approve by Councilor Johnson, supported by Councilor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve change order number three from Casper Construction for the 2023 Street project for an increase in 40, increase in the contract of Casper for $42,075.
So moved.
Move to approve by Councilor Johnson. Support?
Support.
By Councilor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve change order number four from Casper Construction for the street project in order to extend the substantial completion date to honor before October 28th, 2024.
So moved.
Move to approve by Councilor Freely, is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Reed noted that change order number five was for the irrigation system that was part of Target's parking, Target's landscape, which was disrupted during the work on the project. The construction company had to remove it and then replace it because of the location of it. There is really not a better spot for it to go, so they put it back in the best spot that they could. Therefore, it was suggested, it was approved and supported to approve change order number five from Casper Construction to increase their contract by $5,148 to replace the damaged irrigation system. So moved.
Move to approve by Councilor Motley and supported by Councilor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
He had a great presentation by Eric Jonison, our deputy fire chief, regarding the proposed Sprint paramedic pilot program. Once the plan is approved by St. Louis County, the program will be purchasing Chevy Tahoe vehicles in order to stage them throughout the area in the county. The vehicles will be in service from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM with no weekend coverage, but they'll be able to respond to calls from wherever they're located at. It was moved and supported to approve the memorandum of understanding for the St. Louis County Sprint paramedic pilot program with the various entities. So moved.
Move to approve by Councilor Motley, is there support? Councilor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the bylaws for the St. Louis County Sprint paramedic pilot program. So moved.
Moved.
Move to approve by Councilor Johnson, supported by Councilor Paulson, was it?
Motley.
Councilor Motley. I heard through different voices, so I wasn't sure which one was which. By Councilor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
And it was moved and supported to approve the billing agreements for the St. Louis County Sprint paramedic pilot program with various cities. So moved.
Move to approve by Councilor Paulson and supported by Councilor Johnson. Further discussion? Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Eric and all the staff that worked on this to help our surrounding communities get better response times and also by saving the city potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars over the period by not having to run our ambulances out for non, maybe non-needed emergency services, but that can just support the local departments out there. So really appreciate that and that forward thinking from the fire department.
Yes, thank you, Councilor Johnson. And just to clarify the, how these reimbursements are coming with respect to our staff using and staffing these things, all, all costs are reimbursable, including equipment from the, from the ALS or the AMS statutory approval of the, the money to accommodate this pilot program. So we know costs to the city will be reimbursed for that. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Had a great discussion regarding the purchase of a Pierce Velocity 100-foot ascendant tower ladder truck, which would have a proposed delivery of 45 to 48 months at an estimated cost of 2.459, 9979 million, 2 million, over 2 million. We did find out since that meeting, we were, we have been notified by our bond counsel that we cannot make a motion to approve the purchase today. If we were to make a motion to continue with the purchase, it would have to be to set a public hearing with at least a 10-day notice before we can make a purchase of this size.
So, and if we're to approve this, we would have to, before we do, we have to hold a public hearing first.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And I did find out today, I'm sorry, excuse me, Steve, I did get an email today from my cohort at Iron Range, Research and Range, I triple R B, that USDA has just released a funding cycle for fire, fire equipment or public works equipment. So I just reached out to USDA today to ask them about that possibility.
Thank you. Councilor Johnson, and then over to Councilor Paulson. Councilor Johnson.
Do you want to set a public meeting now or do you want to wait until after you hear?
We want to do a public hearing at the next council meeting, we can. If you want to, at least we can keep going in the process.
And that public, that public meeting is good for a year.
For a year.
Okay. So I will make a motion to set that a public hearing at the beginning of the next regular city council meeting for the acquisition of the fire truck.
And that would be on December 10th, correct?
Correct.
So we would have a meeting, a motion by Councilor Johnson to set a public hearing, pardon? 26th of November? Okay, okay. Set a public hearing for the 26th of November, a motion by Councilor Johnson, is there?
Excuse me, Mayor. As long as we can get the notice in tomorrow, we'd have to get it in the paper.
Is, is that possible to do so?
Otherwise, I guess, yeah, we could probably get it over there.
Okay, we'll set the public hearing for November the 26th at what time? 5:00 PM?
Yeah.
Provided that you can get it in on time, which we should be doing. Okay, so is there motion unafforded? Set that public hearing for November 26th at 5:00 PM, is there support? By Councilor Freely, is there any further discussion? Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I can't support this at this time because I'm, I'm concerned as to, again, how the process is that we're doing this. So we're setting a public hearing and basically by doing that, we are, we're approving already the purchase of a fire truck, of the ladder truck.
Before we could purchase it, we have to have the public hearing. So yeah, the, the motion would be to approve. We have a public hearing and then we can determine if we want to purchase it or not. We're approving theoretically to purchase it tonight, correct?
But the council hasn't decided whether to actually approve the, approve this or not. And what I want to do is I want to get information from our bond counsel and what that does, the payment, the whole nine yards, when things drop off. So I would not be comfortable going forward with a public hearing until we hear from our bond counsel and understand when the next bond drops off. I'm definitely in support that we need the ladder truck, but I need to understand how we're going to pay for it. So I feel like, and when Deputy Chief Jonison was here, he did say that if we ordered this and canceled it, we would be subject to penalty, to pay a penalty on that. So I'm, I'm just concerned as to how we're doing this process. And I would rather have the information that we receive from the bond counsel before we say, yes, we're moving forward to the next step of a public hearing. I think we're doing it backwards. So I would not be in support of, of having a public hearing before we have that information. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So by, by, by setting the public hearing, pretend that technically we would, we, we, can we set a public hearing before we approve?
You, you can't approve until after the public hearing.
So we can't approve anything until after the public hearing. So we have a public hearing, then we can determine whether we want to approve it or not. Is that correct?
You can. You can.
You could, but not necessarily we have to.
Correct.
By that time, we may have some additional information from our bond counsel, some that might provide some more clarity to Councilor Paulson and all, and all the rest of us. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Biondich.
Thank you. I was just going to have that clarified. So we, when would we be able to meet with the bond counsel?
You can have him come to the public hearing if you'd like. That might be a good idea.
And this.
Uh, Sherry?
My understanding that there's several options. We don't need, need to necessarily bond. So I think it would be a good discussion at a public hearing.
So if we have the public hearing, which we can do, we're not approving the purchase of this. We can't do it until after the public hearing. And after that, the public hearing, we hear from the general public. We have some other options you might be able to present to the public, to us. At that particular time, we can determine if we want to move forward or not. Is that correct?
That's how you want to do it? Yes.
Pardon?
Yes, if that's how you want to do it.
We could, that's the way to do it. So, and so we're not approving tonight. We're just having, opening a public hearing and to discuss it and what our options are, maybe get some additional information from our bond counsel as requested by Councilor Paulson and have that information available as we discuss it at the public hearing. But we could have the public hearing, but not necessarily vote to purchase. Thank you, Councilor Paulson. I'm sorry, Councilor Biondich, continue. Additional, additional clarity you need or, okay, what is the question?
I just need to clarify, have it clarified. Are we moving forward with this? Or are we doing the meeting and then making a decision after we meet with bond counsel?
The purchase today.
We, we are not.
We cannot.
We cannot.
No. Until after the public hearing.
Until you have a public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Biondich. Councilor Paulson.
Thank you. And again, the clarification, I mean, this is an expenditure of $2.4 million. And I understand we have to have a public hearing, but you normally would, like in order to have a public hearing, you have to have a public hearing on what you're having it about. And what it would be about is to purchase the truck. But until we understand how that's going to work financially, I don't understand that we can have a public hearing. It, it, that doesn't make sense to me. And I need to, I need way more time to absorb how this is going to work in, in the budget process and what that looks like in the levy or future levies, how we're going to manage that. It's not something that I think that we should just be making a, a quick decision on. Although I know we have until, I believe, January 1st, you know, to actually make a decision to purchase, to, to put the order in for the truck. But if we do this, and I know we, the public hearing has to happen, but even if we go forward and we don't figure out how we're going to pay for it, we will be penalized to cancel. So I, I just, I would rather have more information and then with all that information collected, be able to have a public hearing that would lay it out for the public, once we get all that information collected. So again, I, I just can't support it the way that it is. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Councilor Paulson. Councilor Motley, and then back over to Councilor Johnson. Councilor Motley.
I echo Councilor Paulson's thoughts. Also, I would like to get more information before we greenlight a $2.5 million expenditure. I do want to say though, I am 100% supporting a future ladder truck. I just, I think we need more information and I want to see what it looks like with the budget. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Motley. Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. So often we have to have these discussions at a committee of the whole meeting and they have a tendency to get rushed or cut off. My thinking on having a public meeting to start the process is so that we can get all of that information. And we have a year to get additional information, maybe have another public meeting where we present. I think that my concern, as, as Deputy Chief said, is that there will be another increase at some point in the near future. And I don't think a public meeting is mutually exclusive of everything that you're looking for. I think it's a step, a public step that says, this is what we're doing, this is why we're looking for it, this is how we're doing it. Here's a few of the options we have now. And then as we move forward, we finalize that. And then there's nothing saying we can't have another special public meeting to explain exactly what's going to happen in the process. We won't be paying for this for four years because we don't pay for it until we get it, except for whatever the deposit is. And we're not even making that commitment. We're just talking about, if anything else, what the process will be for the public. So they know how we are going to move forward and they know, you know, for me, it's, I appreciate that, that everybody's supportive of this. But there's also other avenues that maybe some of the general public has ideas for other funding sources that we don't have. And having them come to a public meeting would just allow us to have more to work from. So I, I think, I'll reiterate, this is not a mutually exclusive, we have the public meeting and nothing else can happen. To me, it's the start of an entire process where we, it's an extra half hour before a regular council meeting. And those questions can now be public and we can get them answered publicly at a later time. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Johnson. So for me, it's, you know, I understand the process, the requests that you're making, Councilor Paulson. So I first want for some clarity, if we were, if this, if this passes, motion passes to have this public hearing. And we have the public hearing on November the 26th. And we, we don't have to make any decision. We've had the public hearing, we don't have to decide to purchase or not. We have a whole year to which to do that. Is that correct?
Correct. But the price is only good till January 1.
Right, I understand that. Regardless of, regardless of what decision we make today, one way or the other, the, the price is still going to be an increase in the price because we're not going to have another council meeting after December 10th. So after January 1, it's a moot point anyway, right? So there is, whether there's an increase or not, we don't know that. That's what Assistant Fire Chief said there was. Maybe they'll hold that for longer. I don't know. But having the public hearing just gives us, it's good for one year and we don't have to make a decision to purchase or not. We're just having the hearing. Is that correct? All right, thank you. Councilor Motley.
So Britt, this grant, was it that you applied for on behalf of the city of Virginia?
No, I was, I was notified there was a grant, there was an opportunity for a grant today.
Okay.
At the USDA. So I reached out to Tyler Ray, which I, I think Tyler was here when we did our USDA bond financing for the Public Safety Center. Reached out to him to see if he was our contact and I haven't heard back from him yet.
Okay, if, okay, so it's kind of too early to even know what that might look like.
Yeah. I had never even heard of it till today. I got the email, like I said, from I triple R B. They sent it to both here and Hibbing. And I'm.
Okay.
Was really excited to see that. There's an option.
Yeah, that's interesting. Do, I know this is probably you don't know either, but like, you know, when it would be awarded if, whatever monetary.
It sounds like it's, it's a, it's a split. So there would be, still be costs. It wouldn't be a total free thing. But it, a lot of the factors that go into them giving you the award is your low to moderate income factor areas, which thankfully we have quite a bit in our service area, which helps. So that gives us a plus on there. And so then with, and then it goes by population. There's a lot of different things. So hopefully I'll get some more information. I don't have it today unfortunately, because I just heard it was even open today.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. So for some clarity, the motion, or J, on item 9.1K, it says approve the proposal to purchase this 100-foot ladder truck with a proposed delivery of 45 to 48 months at a cost of 2.4. Is there, was there a motion, was that a motion to do so? You set the public, so, and you, and you indicated, because there's no, there's no motion or second because we can't do this until we have a public hearing. Is that correct? Okay, so, all right, thank you. Anything else? Do we have a motion on the floor in support? To set the public hearing for November 26th at 5:00 PM? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Freely.
Is it reasonable and appropriate to invite George and our, our bond counsel to come and present during the public hearing and/or Sherry to add additional information relative to the budget or the levy impact that it might have? So that that can act as a information gathering time as well, the public as well as us?
We can.
Let's plan on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So either way, there's probably going to be an increase on the cost of social investment. And I understand setting a public hearing, I'm all in favor of having a public hearing. I don't see a problem or with, with, with request a process. I think that can be done. We have to make adjustments along the way. We're not making a commitment to purchasing. But on the other hand, it's, the purchase is 2.4, you know, 2.459 million dollars. And so, I mean, to do our due diligence and touch all the bases, you know, that's important to do that as well. So it's a, one hand or the other, but in either way we do it, it's a process that is, is legal to do. Is that correct? All right, just a matter of do you want to set a public hearing or not? That's a motion in the second floor to which to do so. And if not, we, if it, if it doesn't pass, we move to, to likely another motion later on down the road or whatever motion comes after that. So, so it has been moved and supported to set the public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Paulson, do you have some further discussion?
I just wanted to clarify, I'm in favor of doing the process correctly with having a public hearing. Of course, we have to do that and, and, you know, notify the public what the intentions are. I just would rather have. I just would rather have the information to discuss amongst us before we have a public hearing to present to the public. So I still am, that's why I'm going to vote no, because I'd rather have that discussion with Sheri, whether we bond, whether we lease, whatever. You know, there are different options that I think Sheri had alluded to in maybe in one of the emails. But before we go ahead with a public hearing, I just would like to understand the finances behind it. So that's where I will stay. Thank you.
And we can still invite George Iwetson and our bond council to the next committee of the whole meeting to give us some clarity in that regard, regardless of this passes or not. Thank you. Councilor Beyondich?
And that's, that's where I was going with this. If we could have set that on the committee of the whole so we would have time to talk amongst the council and then have the public hearing after that?
Down the road. Okay, thank you.
At our next committee of the whole, is this something that we could have them come and talk to us about?
Correct me if I'm wrong here, Brett, I don't know if that would give enough time for George and them. We could try, yeah.
So, but there's a motion on the floor right now and we could make another motion after this. There's a motion on the floor to set a public hearing for November 26th at 5:00 PM with respect to item 9.1K on the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call please, Pam.
Friedle?
Aye.
Paulson?
No.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Aaron Zelli?
Aye.
Puffy?
Aye.
Motley?
No.
Five two. Okay, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson discussed the need for a new ambulance to be delivered in fiscal year 2026. Was moved and supported, oh, there was a further discussion will be coming forward regarding the equipment on revenue expenditures. Talked about trading in vehicles, two of our equipments quotes that came in with a 12 month lead time. No further action was taken on that one. Sheri Erickson discussed the proposed increase for the people's service contract, which is included in the 25, 2025 proposed budget. Was moved and supported to approve the increase of $994 per month for the people's service contract for fiscal year 2025 due to the increase in the consumer price index.
Thank you. Looking for council action regarding the people services contract for fiscal year 2025. Yes, for clarity, their contract doesn't expire till the end of 2026, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
I will reluctantly move the increase.
Councilor Johnson reluctantly moves to approve the increase, is there support?
Aye.
By Councilor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
Roll call please, Pam.
Paulson?
No.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Aaron Zelli?
Aye.
Puffy?
Reluctantly aye.
Motley?
Aye.
Friedle?
No.
A motion passes five two, thank you.
The council reviewed the proposal from the Masavi Humane Society for 2025, which is an increase of $3,500 per month. It was moved and supported to request the Masavi Humane Society members attend the next committee of the whole meeting to further discuss the contract.
All moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson, is there support?
Aye.
By Councilor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Had an update on the Street and Alley Committee meeting that was held on October 31st. We discussed at the Street and Alley Committee meeting the vacation of 7th Street South, which is east of 6th Avenue in order to allow for the expansion of Pohaki Lumber. It was moved and supported to proceed with the vacation of that portion of 7th Street North, which is east of 6th Avenue for a business expansion of Pohaki Lumber with the understanding that there will also be space left so that we can still access that area to Bezos Lake.
A move to approve by Councilor Friedle been supported by Councilor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Was moved and supported to direct staff to work with Pohaki Lumber on the stormwater ranch system relocation in order to allow for the building expansion project.
All moved.
A move to approve by Councilor Motley, is there support? By Councilor Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
At the Street and Alley Committee meeting on October 31st, and again, at the committee of the whole, we had a discussion regarding 3rd Avenue and 1st Street North intersection and the existing stop signs and then adding, the request to add two additional stop signs on 3rd Avenue. It was moved and supported to receive and file the request for placement of additional stop signs on 3rd Avenue at 1st Street North.
Thank you.
It was, we had discussion regarding the solid waste proposals that were received by the city when we did our RFP. It was moved and supported to appoint a committee of Councilor Paulson and Motley to be on the committee to review the solid waste proposals.
All moved. A move to approve those committee appointments by Councilor Friedle, is there support? Is there support?
Aye.
By Councilor Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Was moved and supported to approve the resolution to hire recreation assistants. And in your packet, we have the final resolution with three names that we've brought forward.
All moved.
Moved by Councilor Motley to adopt the resolution to hire recreational assistants, is there support? Is there support? Support by Councilor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported at the meeting to approve the resolution to hire a digital, digital multimedia technician. In your packet, we have a resolution that has two names. One of the names has asked to be removed, so at this time, we're only asking for permission to approve the resolution to hire Isaiah Olson.
All moved.
Isaiah Olson only.
Thank you. Was that a move to approve by Councilor Johnson? Is there support?
Aye.
By Councilor Friedle? Is there any further discussion? This is a full-time position?
This is not a full-time position.
Thank you. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Was moved and supported at the meeting to approve the resolution to hire a digital, digital multimedia technician. In your packet, we have a resolution that has two names. One of the names has asked to be removed, so at this time, we're only asking for permission to approve the resolution to hire Isaiah Olson.
All moved.
Isaiah Olson only.
Thank you. Was that a move to approve by Councilor Johnson? Is there support?
Aye.
By Councilor Friedle? Is there any further discussion? Councilor Paulson?
I will be abstaining from the vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Paulson. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes six with one abstention. Thank you.
Had a motion to approve the special meeting that was held today to canvass the votes. Thank you for coming today, appreciate it. We also had a motion to approve the resolution to hire the patrol officer for the Virginia Police Department.
All moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson, is there support?
Aye.
By Councilor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
We discussed that the city has received two different grants for the Eastern Recreation Area Project, or next phase we're on is the design phase to get to 30% design. It was moved and supported to accept the quote from Bar Engineering for the design phase of the Eastern Recreation Area Project.
All moved.
A move to approve by Councilor Motley, is there support?
Aye.
By Councilor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Councilor Beyondich?
And I had a resident reach out to me and are they notified when things are happening? When we start, I know when Bar Engineering was here last time, they said there would be meetings taking place with the landowners and, and they will be notified and kept informed on what is happening on this project.
Probably won't be till the second step, if you remember, the proposal's got three steps. The first step is with the people that own the land on the pit edge and then the second one becomes public hearings and public meetings. So around that second time, we'll be notifying them.
Is there a contact person from that area that even when you have a meeting with the landowners, that they could be aware of what is happening, the steps that are being taken on this?
Certainly can try to keep them informed. You know, I, we, I, the city staff has not been involved in any of the discussion with the landowners purposefully.
Okay.
Because we, we, it's sometimes when it's the city coming in, because we have, always have that eminent domain power, people get a little bristly. So we have not been involved. So that first step that we are, they're going to do part of this process is not involve city staff whatsoever.
Okay.
So at the time we get the, we have, the way we've ran these before, these few other meetings we had in the first steps that we were working on this project, we would have a meeting with the engineer when he was ready. And we certainly can notify the residents when we're going to have that meeting or when we're getting information similar to the report that we got from Bar Engineering showing what they've done so far.
Okay.
As soon as we got that, I sent it to the landowners over there, the residents over in Franklin area.
Oh, so they did, they did receive that.
We do try to keep them in, but it's going to take some time, so they probably won't hear anything for quite a few months.
Okay.
The whole thing is supposed to be wrapped up by middle of next year. So I'm hur, I'm thinking early '25, we might know some more that we could talk to the residents about.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I think there's a difference between landowners and residents, because if not using the Eastern Recreation Area for the residents that live in Franklin addition of Virginia. So landlord discussions, the city's out of it. But I think it might be prudent for us to request that the residents of Franklin just get a letter of notification saying that, you know, we've got this grant and they're, they're going to be discussing the landlord issues with where that area is. The residents are well aware where that is, they have a map, they've got the information with respect to that. I sat in the gazebo with the entire community there for the most part and talked to them about that. And they simply wanted to be informed, so I think that would be something you're requesting, Councilor Beyondich, is to keep the residents informed of the process moving forward, even though we'll have a public hearing later on down the road. If we have this grant and they're going to meet with the landlords, we just can simply let the residents know that, hey, we have this grant and we're moving forward, they're going to meet with the landlords about the Eastern Recreation Area, just to make sure that they're informed from, from, from day one. Is that basically what you're asking?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, all right. Councilor Johnson?
The motion says 30%, what is that dollar amount?
The 30% is the design phase. We'll have, we won't have full plans and specs by the time this project is done, we'll have a 30% plans and specs, which is basically a site plan is what we'll end up with.
My question is, what are we, what are we spending on this? What is the dollar amount? Because we're approving spending money for the 30% and I, is it?
30% plans is what that means. It doesn't mean 30% dollar, it means 30% plans. So the total dollar amount is of all three tasks are $62,700.
Okay, 62,700. Thank you, that's, that's what I was wanting to clarify, thank you.
And this 30%, this grant will cover first phase with no cost to the city, is that correct?
Will cover $41,500.
Okay, and so if we don't move forward, there's no additional?
Done.
We're done. All right, thank you. All right. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call please, Pam.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Aaron Zelli?
Yes.
Puffy?
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Friedle?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
A motion passes six one, thank you.
Thank you. We had discussion regarding the Iron Trail Motors Event Center parking lot and the do not enter signage that was placed because of the trail location. It was moved and supported to allow to direct staff to continue to review the one-way signage and traffic flow at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center East parking lot, and we are looking at other ways to accommodate that parking lot for the future.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Paulson, is there support? By Councilor Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to be supporting this as the council approved that plan and what it would look like as we were in the design phases and approving stuff. And I think it's just a matter of getting used to it. I actually think it might be helpful in the future that that traffic is more controlled in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call please, once again, Pam.
Johnson?
No.
Aaron Zelli?
Yes.
Puffy?
Aye.
Motley?
Aye.
Friedle?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Beyondich?
A motion passes six one, thank you.
At the end of the meeting, Matt, did Matt read us from S H to give a little brief discussion regarding what was the 2024 Alley Project now being called the 2025 Alley Project and that we need to have a public hearing, which I mentioned earlier, is going to be set for December 10th.
A public hearing December 10th?
December 10th.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else? Thank you very much for that elongated presentation. Okay, we'll move to item 10 on the agenda, which is commission liaison reports. Does any city council wish to give a commission liaison report today? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 11, department head reports. Does any department head have a report that they would like to give this evening? Anything more, Brett?
I would just like to remind everybody that the Twilight Holiday Parade is on the 23rd, which is Saturday.
23rd, which is Saturday. It starts at 5:15 and fireworks start at 6:15. The parade usually doesn't last much longer than that. Their, um, road will be closed starting at 4:00. So Chestnut Street will be closed starting at 4:00 PM on the 23rd. It will open right after, the, most of the Chestnut Street will open right after the fireworks. Um, the 500 block, as we approved today, will be closed that evening.
Uh, thank you. Uh, anything from legal? Well, nothing from you? Good, thank you. Pam, anything else? Long largest process for the election campaign, outstanding work. I mean, uh, you had a great team working for you and you worked hard to see to get that done. And boy, it was very efficient. So we thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to all the election judges that did help and city staff here. It, uh, went off without a hitch, I guess.
Yeah, very good. Yep. The election judge did outstanding work. So thank you. Uh, anything from, uh, our finance HR director this evening? Harry?
No, nothing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move to item number 12, uh, councillor reports. Does any city councillor wish to give a report this evening? Councillor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm going to bring this up one last time. Um, according to the Minnesota Human Rights Act, everyone is protected in Minnesota from illegal discrimination. What is discrimination? Discrimination is when someone treats you differently or does not give you the rights you would normally have because of your race, your age, your sex, or other protected characteristics. Under the Minnesota Human Rights Act, it is illegal to treat you differently because you belong to a certain group or protected class of people. Um, the department of ed, it goes into a little bit more detail with, uh, re, race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex, age, marital status, status in regards to public assistance, sexual orientation, or disability. Discrimination can occur as a result of stereotype or intentional discrimination, or it can occur when an organization's policy or practice affects a group of people differently than it affects another group. Although everyone is protected from discrimination, discrimination occurs when you are treated differently because of a particular protected characteristic. Our city policy reads, um, let me see here. I've gotta get my notes. Uh, section two, uh, to, we're in policy number, section five, section 2.0, nondiscrimination, to establish policy for nondiscriminatory working environment and disciplinary action for disciplinary behavior by, discriminatory behavior by employees. Policy, it is the policy of the City of Virginia to treat all employees equally and without regard to race, color, creed, color, national origin, sex, age, marital status, or the presence of any handicap. It is also the City of Virginia's policy to foster and maintain a harmonious and nondiscriminatory work environment for all the people. The City of Virginia will not tolerate racial, ethnic, religious, or sexual slurs or comments demeaning national origin or the handicap of any employees. Violations of the policy will cause for discrimination, or will be caused, uh, for, uh, sorry, I lost my place. I printed it small, uh, with warnings or other actions. Um, the next policy is section three, personnel policies, respectful workplace. This policy is to provide general guidelines about the conduct that is not appropriate in the workplace and other sponsored social, city-sponsored social event. The city acknowledges this policy cannot possibly predict all the situations that might arise and recognizes that some employees are exposed to disrespectful behavior and even violence by the nature of their jobs. Uh, maintaining a spectral, respectful public service work environment is a shared responsibility. This policy is applicable to all city employees, volunteers, firefighters, members of boards, commissions, and city council members. Um, the procedure should someone feel, uh, they have been discriminated against, um, within my, your working environment is to immediately report it to your supervisor, um, even if you have destruct, discussed it directly with individuals, um, and to provide reporting information. The City of Virginia is committed to investigating and correcting any form of discrimination taking place in our employ. We are committed by, to addressing these issues with our organization, and we believe we can effectively address such matters internally when employees you advise of, of the problem. Um, again, it, our policy talks about what's covered, creed, color, national origin, disability, pregnancy, gender-based bias statements, stereotypes about men, women, marital status, sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, family status, or status with regard to public assistance. And that brings me to the policy that was brought forward, um, from the buildings, or from the Buildings and Grounds Committee, um, for the security of the buildings of the city. Um, the policy that was brought forward was fair and equitable. Um, it did not have any exclusionary language in it. And in this, uh, room, it was added exclusionary, um, verbiage that basically targets me as the one city councillor member that everybody here has agreed to, uh, does come in the off hours to utilize workspace and to prepare items for, um, for pub, for the public to check emails, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I also want to remind everybody that I had asked very specifically what security risk or what has happened after the last seven and a half years, that suddenly we needed to exclude everybody but the mayor from attend, coming to city hall during closed business hours. Um, and, and I think all of this adds up to a very targeted, specific policy, um, part of a policy. By all means, I respect everything that the policy does, and I believe it helps our staff to be safe. Um, I will read the specific, um, portion of this policy on page two in the middle entitled city council access. Council members may enter any building during regular business hours through standard access points. They may only enter the city after, city buildings after hours if attending a meeting or by reserving a room in advance with the appropriate staff. I will note that this excludes the mayor and allows the, the mayor, whoever that may be, to come in and out as it would. With that being said, I will make a motion to exclude the city acts, council access from this policy as it is discriminatory, and I feel that it is, it, the rest of the policy covers anything that might be needed. Thank you.
Okay. And your motion is, once again, councillor Johnson?
My counsel is to remove the portion of the policy that states city council access. Council members may enter, enter any building during regular hours through standard access points. They may only enter city buildings after hours if attending a meeting or by reserving a room in advance with the appropriate city staff.
Hey, thank you. Motion by councillor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by councillor, uh, Friedleb. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Paulson?
I have a point of order.
Yes, please.
So we're asking to remove, I thought the, only the person that made the motion in the first place could undo the motion. I have a point of order. Cause that was a specific motion to adopt that language.
Noel? Uh, there was a motion made, uh, to, uh, adopt the security policy, which, and added, uh, that to, um, the motion was added to exclude city councillors from entering the building, uh, after business hours unless they're attending a meeting or they have, or reserved the room, et cetera, et cetera. And so that was part of, well, the motion was made, and I don't know who made the motion. If you could check back, Pam, and find out who made that motion and who seconded the motion.
Councillor Paulson seconded by councillor Motley.
Pardon?
It was a motion by councillor Paulson and seconded by councillor Motley.
Okay, the, uh, according, uh, by councillor, the motion was made by councillor Paulson, supported by councillor Motley to adopt this, add this to the policy. And the motion carried. So the question is now, uh, councillor, uh, at a point of order by councillor Paulson, that councillor Johnson is asking that that portion of the policy with respect to, uh, excluding the city councillor from, uh, coming in, uh, after business hours, uh, he wants that, uh, the motion is to remove that portion of it to, to allow, uh, access. So the question is?
Mayor, if I might?
Please.
It's to amend and remove.
Amend and remove.
The policy, I, I understand, has been adopted. I'm asking to amend and remove the current policy.
Okay, that portion of it?
Yes.
Okay. So, I, uh, looking for some clarity here.
Not sure. I've never had that come up before.
Okay.
Sorry. I don't know if Britt knows more.
Yeah, I don't know.
Pull it to the next meeting.
Can she turn her on her microphone? I cannot hear what she's saying.
Uh, she's wondering, she doesn't know the answer to that, councillor Johnson. She's, uh, suggesting that maybe we table this until we get some, uh, further legal opinion with respect to that, and then, uh, discuss it at the next committee, the whole meeting. That's, that was, that was her recommendation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor, uh, Paulson?
Sorry, and I, I apologize that I had to step out of the room. But, um, in that discussion, and I don't know, um, if councillor Johnson was at the meeting, um, in that discussion, I specifically also addressed having a, a space, maybe an office space that we could all go to. So there wasn't any discrimination or anything. This was basically just, um, what we had discussed, and we put a motion out there. So my point of order was the motion maker or the supporter would have to be the only people that could remove that. So, um, I guess I will move to table until we get more legal advice. Thank you.
So councillor Johnson has a motion and support by councillor Friedleb. Uh, so the recommendation by council to get some additional information on how the legal process moves forward. The suggestion was that we table this until the next committee, the whole meeting. So is that your motion to table?
Yes, Mayor.
Motion by councillor, uh, Paulson to table. Is there support?
Support for discussion.
By councillor Motley. And no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Uh, roll call, please, uh, Pam.
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Friedleb?
No.
Paulson?
Aye.
Biondich?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
A motion passes five two. So, uh, it, the motion is table to the next committee, the whole meeting. Thank you. Any other, uh, any other information, councillor Johnson?
Yes. Um, I would want to point out a few things that have happened over the last few weeks that I think people need to know about within our community. First of all, a great big thank you to the Cinema Six Theaters in, uh, Mount Nyirn. They donated 64 gallons of popcorn to the fifth grade for their Halloween party. To put that in perspective, that is two large garbage cans full of popcorn. Um, so that was a great thing. Um, the fifth graders worked collaboratively to arrange downtown Virginia a, um, trick or treat among downtown businesses. Um, and I just wanted to let folks know that this is our community supporting our, our students. They wrote letters. They made signs. They took this all on as a, a community project. So thank you to NTS, um, Chair, Virginia Senior Center, Francine Bank, Aaron's Thomas, Thompson, uh, Realit, Realty and Insurance, Snickers, Subway, Herbert Photography, State Farm at the Makow Theater, Kane Lakes, The Eye Clinic, Jim's Florals, Andrew's Cameras, Wells Fargo, um, Mass Distro, I'm writing handwriting, uh, from the teacher. Um, Mass Distro, or Bistro, maybe? Oh, maybe that's, I don't know. Um, Jews, Pace Analytical, Domino's, Virginia Foundation, Sugar Shack, Five and Go, um, Ace Hardware, W A Fisher, Claire and Harbill, Barber Graphics, and T, Teeny Square Building. So those folks all opened up or did extra in the morning so that fifth graders could go trick or treating. Um, I have to say that my daughter was a part of that, and the candy she got meant we did not have to go trick or treating that night, even though we did. Um, I also want to thank the Rock Ridge School Districts. Yesterday, the elementary school, North Star, um, invited veterans of, of family of students to come in and get a free lunch with their students and have an amazing, um, afternoon. Um, it was really good to see those folks sitting down with, with students and, and having conversations about what it meant to be a veteran, what it meant to serve. Um, and I have two upcoming events that I are pretty proud of. Uh, the Rock Ridge Musical is happening this weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Um, it's the Addams Family. These young students have been working on this for months. Um, it should be, uh, an amazing performance. They get to use all of the technology in that building. Um, so you can, if you're on Facebook, you can go to Rock Ridge Musicals and their ticket information is there. And next weekend, um, Chair is putting on Frozen Junior, which is approximately 50-some students from the area schools, um, performing, uh, Frozen Junior. Those are Thursday and Friday at 7:00 PM and Saturday and Sunday at, I, it's 1:00 or 2:00 PM. I can't quote on that. Um, and, and ticket information for that is available at chair-min.org. So a lot of really nice things happening in our community. Um, and I would encourage folks out there in the community that have special events that have, they've seen or that want our community to be recognized for, to send me an email, and I will gladly, uh, announce those at our Tuesday night meetings. That's sjohnson@virginianmin.us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Johnson. Anything else you'd like to add? Anything more? Okay. Uh, councillor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as a downtown business owner, I thought it was just awesome. Those kids came down for trick or treating and, uh, Rox's Jewelers was, we were happy to help sponsor that with, to see all the kids with all their costumes, as well as the Virginia Community Foundation. So I just wanted to make sure we mentioned all the businesses that participated. Thank you, Mayor.
You're certainly. Thank you, uh, councillor Paulson. Uh, councillor Biondich?
Thank you. Two things. Number one, I just want to back up on our agenda. Um, would we be able to contact, um, George, the, the, we were gonna try and set that meeting up before we had the, the hearing?
In the middle of an email to George right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, and just a reminder for everybody that the Festival of Trees events, which will be the week of the 20, 21st, it starts, um, and the foundation will be having the, um, bingo event again at the Elks Club. So I hope everybody gets out and enjoys that weekend. The parade will be happening, and, um, the chamber is doing the bonfire. Britt, I know you're busy.
Yes, the chamber is doing a, a community bonfire on Silver Lake on the beach, actually. And they're gonna have food from Grandma's Restaurant and, remember the other one, there's gonna be chili and soup, um, for everybody to come try, come enjoy, come warm up by the fire, have a good time. And then you have the bingo. We have the tour of homes. We have the parade, fireworks. It's a whole big fun week. So, a good time. A bazaar for the first time at the North, the, um, North Star Elementary. They're inviting everybody to come in and see their vendors and see their crafts. It should be fun. It should be a good week.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, hey, anybody else have anything they'd like to bring up? I have a couple items I would like to, before we, we adjourn. First of all, uh, of all the things we discussed here today and all the angst and controversy that comes with the elected, uh, body, uh, making decisions one way or the other, uh, we've, we sometimes forget, you know, our community and what's really important for our community, and that is yesterday was November 11th, and it was Veterans Day. And it's a time where we honor all veterans, not just the ones who passed away, but all veterans who have served and all veterans who currently served. And those restaurants in the City of Virginia who gave free meals, or discounted meals, to the, a veteran. It doesn't matter who they are and their families. I, 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 my heart goes out to, uh, those, those vendors for doing so. And I don't have a list of them, but I know a lot of them that went. People that I served with, uh, were able to go and have a free meal. Those are, uh, and a lot older than I am. And so we had a bunch of events yesterday, uh, honor guard events, and we were, we went to quite a few, uh, different events. But the two I want to bring out is the Waterview Pines and the, uh, up there at Edgewood Vista. There were veterans there who are infirmed, who served this nation in a variety of capacity, whether it's a career, whether it's one year, whether it's five years. And they're, they're sitting there infirmed as the staff there and our honor guard were there to honor their service, and all the service and the family members are there as well. And, uh, each one of them received a gift from Waterview Pines, which was a commemorative coin for their years of service, and a, and a little description of, of what, what they did when they were in the service. And then each one received a, a personalized message pocket watch for, for themselves. And the tears that came down from them was just heartbreaking. I mean, it was amazing to see the support that people have. And so for those people who think that Veterans Day is just a holiday, it's not a holiday. It's a remembrance and an honor to those veterans who serve their country. No matter what we do, no matter what kind of arguments we have, no, all those kind of things, we, those are the things we need to remember. The sacrifices they made for the safety and security of the people of this nation can only be fully appreciated by those who served beside them. And we need to honor them, and we did. So all of those who honor, whether it's the school or elsewhere, you know, uh, veterans who had to be honored yesterday. And, and if you didn't remember the veteran yesterday, remember one today, or tomorrow, or the next day. So thank you for that. Uh, secondly, um, with the new councillor, a new councillor coming in, uh, there's gonna be some, uh, and the reorganization meeting, I just want to remind everybody, a committee's appointments will be made, uh, by the mayor. Uh, and so if you certainly serve on the committee and you'd like to move off that committee, or want to change, or you have any other questions or comments about it, I'll be making some committee appointments, uh, at the organization meeting. But just bring this up for you to consider what you'd like to, to do, move forward. I will, I'll make sure that Pam sends out all the committees everybody serves on. And, uh, we'll, we'll take a look at that during the reorganization meeting. And also to start thinking about, uh, and we'll talk about this at the reorganization meeting, start thinking about, uh, our staff. We have key leaders in our community, department heads, that are, are, are close to, uh, retirement. Not saying that they're gonna retire, but close to retirement. We have to start thinking about that. We've got to start thinking about their positions and all those positions that are operated. And it'll fall upon us to work with staff in order to plan ahead of time, one year ahead of time, two years ahead of time, as we move down the line. So for every organizational meeting, we'll talk a little bit about that as well, just for you to think about. And then finally, today, I went to the I triple R B board meeting, uh, where, uh, presenters were made, where the I triple R B, uh, awarded a lot of money. I mean, a lot of money. And, uh, so, uh, real quickly, the City of Chisholm, uh, got $2.7 million for the renovation of their ice arena. Iron Range Resources, we, we, uh, the legend golf course got $5.2 million to replace their irrigation system. Hook County, they got money for affordable housing units. Grand Marie, Proseniors. The City of Evith, uh, received $3.6 million to the, to design, engineer, and construct public utilities at its business park, and construct a Hatrick Avenue slip ramp. City of Gilbert, uh, got $1 million for the community center. Hibbing Public Utilities received $3 million for their water infrastructure project. Lone Pine Township, beginning construction for a new water sewer treatment plant, partnership with the City of Nashwauk. Wasaba Fit in Mount Nyirn received $3,600,000 from the renovation, reconstruction, and expansion of the former Wasaba YMCA in Mount Nyirn. Minnesota's Discovery Center received $2.4 million for operating expenses to design, construct, renovate, and furnish and repair their HVAC systems, demolish and comply with the American Civil, uh, Disabilities Act at the Minnesota Discovery Center and the City of, City of Chisholm for historical research funding. over in Mountain Iron. St. Louis County received $2.1 million for the development of the Canyon Integrated Solace Waste Management Campus. City of Silver Bay received $3 million to design, engineer, and construct publicly-owned infrastructure, including sewer, water systems, utility extensions, street construction, wastewater treatment, store water management, sidewalks, and compliance with the American for Disabilities Act. City of Tower received bond proceeds of $3 million for water management and infrastructure projects. And the last item was the City of Virginia, received $3.3 million, which is a grant to be used by Ascension Health Virginia for the modernization, renovation, and expansion of the hospital's emergency room complex to 12 emergency rooms, construct an emergency behavior or self-suite for adults and children within the hospital, and increase the security and safety upgrades at the hospital. The grant must be transferred by the city to the hospital within 30 days of the receipt. Those were the projects that were awarded at the ITRRB meeting today. Questions? Counselor Motley?
So just to clarify, the City of Virginia directly got $0.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Counselor Johnson?
I'd like to thank Representative Lizagard for his hard work to get Ascension Health the money for that hospital. A major focus of that renovation will be mental health beds in an emergency setting, which we so desperately need. That was, that was the one thing, that was one of the only reasons, when I spoke to him, one of the reasons that he was so passionate about this. Right now, if somebody has to go to the emergency room for any reason, if they're lucky, they get a bed in a room. If they're unlucky, they get to sit in the hallway and watch people go by them bleeding. When it comes to mental health, there is zero capability in that building, in that emergency room, to be able to house mental health patients and to give them the safe and secure place they need until they can be transferred to a facility. So I want to thank Representative Lizagard, the Ascension staff, and everybody who made that possible to create a more welcoming community for those with mental health crisis in our community. Thank you.
And during that testimony, it was determined that it was Senator Grant Haushild and Representative Lizagard who sponsored this bill moving forward to direct that tax relief money directly to Ascension Health from the legislature. It's in the City of Virginia, by law, by constitution, by statute, by policy, we have to use that, we have to pass that money through the city to Ascension Health. Now, part of that testimony was a result in talking to both, all the representatives that were there today, talking to Representative Lizagard and Senator Haushild. The reason for that is, this is a first in a series of a long-term infrastructure investment by Ascension Health to keep healthcare here in Virginia. The emergency room upgrades was necessary to accomplish a lot of things, including the behavioral health program, but additional beds because they're over flooded, they're out in the hallways and doing those kind of things, so they needed more, more emergency beds. But, you know, this is part of that structure where, you know, eventually, as we have discussed before, they've publicly said that they want to build a new hospital. Part of that would be, I think, that new emergency room, once it's completed, when a new hospital is built, as it's moving, plans are moving forward for the future, would likely be attached to that brand-new emergency room. In addition to that, our ongoing discussions with Ascension with respect to the acquisition of the clinic would culminate into a brand-new hospital, this new emergency room, and solidify the clinic as well. All one hospital campus, healthcare campus in the City of Virginia, and we'll keep it here. So this $3.3 million investment is just the start of something that's going to happen in the future. Not tomorrow, not next month, but in the future, so. All right, anything else to come before the council today? Seeing none, we will stand adjourned to our next council meeting, which is when? November 26, 2025. Thank you, everybody, for your hard work and for the significant discussions at our meeting tonight. We will stand adjourned to our next meeting. Thank you all. Good night.